We are in listen-only mode.
To have all of you here today, I'd like to say it over again. Good evening, everyone, because the mic was off. We're so glad to see you here with us tonight. Would everyone please join us? First of all, welcome to the village council meeting for August 17th. Anybody know where the year went? I mean, I can't believe how late it is already. I don't know why I'm echoing. I have this other mic on, so. Hold on. Technologies. Is that better? I don't know how to turn it off. Turn it off. Turn it off. How's that? Are we okay? It still sounds like a little echo, right? It's not your fault. Anyway, anyway, please, everyone, stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, certainly was. One of the best pledges we've had all year. Well, it is our express honor and privilege to be able to recognize tonight the girls' 14-year softball team. Now, let me see if I got this right. You won the Babe Ruth State End of World Series? These are two different things? Wow, we got to give them a hand. That is great. I just want to tell you, words alone cannot express how proud we really are of you and how well you have represented the village of Royal Palm Beach. I'm sure everywhere you went and you played and you showed your ability to compete, but not only to compete, but to compete and come out victorious, displayed and showed the world what Royal Palm Beach is really all about. It's about our kids. It's about you. It's about the achievements that you make. So we're just so happy to have you here with us. Does anyone want to share with us a little bit of the details of what they travail to achieve this?
And come on, man. I know, I use this thing. Um, well, I'll tell you what, speaking about the year flying by, it was about this time last year when we actually formed this team, for the most part, to start our journey towards the World Series. And that was always our goal all along, was to get to that point and win it. We had previously been there the last two years and kind of realized what we needed to do to win it. So we built the team even better and set our goals and kicked butt.
Is that a technical term?
What's that?
Is that a technical term?
Yes. That's a softball. But, you know, it was the states, you know, we, we kicked butt, I'm sorry, we kicked butt again, in the states.
That's okay.
We went all the way to the final game, and the final game was probably the best game Babe Ruth has seen in a few years.
Wow.
Um, it was the back, actually, the team we played that we beat jumped out in front, five-nothing on us in the first inning. And unfortunately, it was a timed game. It was only an hour long due to the rain, all the rain we were having. So we didn't have a lot of time to come back, but they did.
But they did. Okay.
They came back, they tied it. We went actually two extra innings and pulled it off. So that's what got us to the World Series. And then the World Series itself was kind of, it started off slow. I'm not going to lie. I was a little nervous. Our first full day we played, we lost a couple of games. We lost a couple of games. And then the third game, I actually, not one of my proudest moments, but I got tossed out of the game.
Well, that got your team excited then, right?
There actually might be some video out there of it. And, um, but I tell you what, it motivated the girls. I mean, they, I never see them. They got so far.
They came through for you. They had your back.
I took a lesson from Billy Martin and Lupinella back in the day. It motivated them. And they didn't, they didn't miss a beat after that. It was, uh, we won everything after that. So. Um, I couldn't be more proud of them. Um, you know, it was a culmination of a great season, and it was awesome. So that's what I got them.
Well, thank you. And I want to say thanks to, to all the parents, because I, I have lived through many years, you know, following my son all around the country playing ball. So I know what that's about, and that's a commitment. And I want to say thank you to all our coaches, all right? And, and, you know, your talent, your... Your leadership dedication to, to our youth is, is what got them to do the great things that they were able to do. And more than anything, I'm sure all of you have come back with a great understanding about being part of the team and what teamwork really means. So once again, thank you to you. All right, we're going to break a minute now and have some, take a photo op. So let's figure out how we get everybody into the picture. But I just want to share one thought with you. About a year ago, a year and a half ago, I was interviewed by a magazine about the village of Royal Palm Beach and, and, you know, the wonderful things that are happening here, the reputation we've established, you know, throughout the community as a village. And one of the things, Mike, the points that came to me that I shared, I want to share with you, and I want you to think about that. You have achieved going to the mountaintop, all right? You are champions. And what you're going to find going forward now is how do you sustain being champions? That's your new challenge, is the sustainment of that. Now that you've achieved that, how do you keep that going and always be about excellence and always have the right attitude to continue to be champions? And you are champions, and we're proud of you. Let's take pictures, okay? Okay. At this time...
We will drain it in 10 seconds as they speak.
I'm going to, I'm going to take a five-minute recess to give you an opportunity to escape. So, so we're going to, we're going to take a recess for five minutes while you take the chair. Thank you all for coming. I want to see you again next year, right? Still champions. Can we do that?
Well, I thought it'd be fun to play and, and like tryouts. They called me Jamie. I'm like, I'm done. I can't. I'm not my sister. I'll never be.
Do we, do we leave those doors open? Do we need to close them? I'm, I'm, do we leave the doors open? Do we close them? You worry about...
You have a date.
Okay, we use 15 minutes to ready, okay? Okay. All right, we will reconvene at this time. And one of the things I didn't get the opportunity to do is to go on record. Diane, please let the record show that all members of council are present.
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Um, and we've already had the, the beginning with the Pledge of Allegiance. So for now, then, we're going to start with reports. And again, we'll start with you.
I'll report this evening, Mayor.
That's okay.
Wow. Okay, well, then I'll...
This is August.
It is August, but I'm going to pick up on that just a little bit to say that Jan and I both were able to attend the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference in Orlando last week. And it, it was a good event. It was a really good event. I'm guessing there were about 1,000 people there. It was, it was crowded. It really was. I mean, 411 cities, you know, well-represented.
You're back from the COVID thing, right?
Uh, pretty much, pretty much. And, um, and so they had, they had a couple of keynote speakers. My favorite one was the one that talked about AI. And, you know, we've heard so much about artificial intelligence. And actually, he, I think his mission was to allay some of our fears about AI.
He did the opposite, right?
And, well, no, he, he, he actually did a pretty good job of at least indicating, so AI is not going to replace us. In fact, if you think about computers and automation, that was a concern. It was a concern. And to some extent, that happened from time to time, place to place. But what it did was it generated new jobs, new roles, and that kind of thing for human beings. So his argument was AI is going to do the same thing.
Yeah.
And that's probably a good way to put it.
It displaced.
And, and so what he, what he was saying was that while you can very quickly generate documents and images and things of that nature by just speaking to one of these AI applications, at the end of the day, the human being needs to have the last word and has a responsibility to edit whatever it is that's generated. But it is a little scary to watch how quickly this is done and how well these draft documents are put together. But again, at the end of the day, so our role now becomes less of producers and more of editors and that kind of thing. So that was, that was one thing that, that he did mention. And, and again, realizing that he came from Silicon Valley, and he's an entrepreneur, he was certainly pushing the positive side of AI. But it was, it was good. It was really excellent. One of the other keynote speakers, actually, there was two of them. It was husband and wife, which is kind of interesting. Both of them are involved in politics in various ways. One is a historian. And he wrote a book about Lincoln and applying Lincoln's model to what we are dealing with today and being divided and, and having difficulty working together. And, uh, and so he, he used a couple of things. He talked about Lincoln's model, and he said, so Lincoln's model really contains things like he used humor, logic, and scripture to depolarize bitter debates. He believed that decency could be the most practical form of politics, and he was always constantly in search of common ground. So, I mean, from that point of view, it really, really made sense. It was interesting to watch a husband and wife, because they were supposed to be going back and forth with questions and answers. Sometime I felt like it was in their kitchen with them. It was a little strange. But, uh, but they, they really did make the point about, we've been through more difficult times in this country than that, and certainly the Civil War was one of them. Somehow we got through it and came out the other side. So it was, it was definitely a, a good presentation. We had a lot of good breakout sessions that talked about property insurance market and talked a bit about the outrageous increases that we're seeing in rates and some of the, some of the reasons for it. Affordable housing, the 95-page act now that, that used to be a bill, is the Live Local Act. And we got a lot of work to do on that. The good news is we got $800 million released from the Stausky Fund, the first time in decades that we got all of the money that was accumulated.
For the purpose this is supposed to be?
For the, exactly, yeah, exactly. So, so that's the good news. The not-so-good news is that there's probably a whole bunch of unintended consequences embedded in that, in that act. And then it's up to us to identify actual experiences to be able to share with next year's legislative session. So we got our work cut out for us, but all in all, I, I thought it was a, a really good, a really good, really good conference and definitely worth the time and, and the trip. That completes my report.
The only thing I would report is, I think it was the Friday before school started, um, our county commissioner opened up. We now have a county commission office, Baxter, in what used to be the DMV building. So if we, you know, need to address or set up any kind of services interaction with our county commissioner, it's nice to have an office in, in Royal Palm Beach. And I was glad I was able to attend that, because it was the last Friday before school started. So took that off to spend with the kids. And that would be my report. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations again to the softball team, the girls 14 and under. They've worked three years for a common goal, and it's amazing to see how they've accomplished it and how they've bounced back the previous two years. So congratulations again. As Councilman Valenta said, we did go out to see and welcome Commissioner Baxter to her new office in the area. So it is very good to have that representation here locally that we can stop by and visit. Um, I was fortunate enough to be invited to sit at a roundtable with Senator Rick Scott. We talked about a lot of issues facing parents and children throughout the county, specifically school safety, big tech accountability, healthy kids, human trafficking, and the fentanyl crisis. So it was really neat just to see that these are some things as much as every other thing we talked about there as well. As a reminder also that school has reopened, so please drive carefully. The sheriff's office is always looking for crossing guards, so you can apply on the pbso.org website by September 30th, if you're interested. Um, we do have a shortage of 453 teachers throughout Palm Beach County. So that's also something else that, you know, classrooms are doubling up, kids are being, um, in overcrowded classrooms. So if you have that interest, they are, um, it's a great place to work, and they have a lot of opportunity. Uh, we have food trucks and concerts coming up every other Friday at Commons Park. So tomorrow night is Three Dog Night and Friends. So we're going big-time 70s. Uh, and also, the school district is offering, um, they're doing a pilot program called Here Comes the Bus. And this is an app. And this is where you can track the buses coming through. There are seven schools in Palm Beach County that were selected, and Royal Palm Beach High School is one of them. So it's really neat just to see that it's our kids who are testing that out. So you can actually track where the bus is, when your kids get on and off, and how far away they are. So we were talking about this earlier, is that when you have children who ride the bus and you're not quite sure, are they late? Did something happen? It's great to follow that. So, and that completes my report.
Just a quick question. Did, did Commissioner Baxter give...
Just a quick question. Did, did Commissioner Baxter give office hours for when she would be there to receive the public?
Yeah, do you wanna answer that?
If she did, I was not paying attention. I apologize.
She'll probably have a rep there.
She does have staff there, but she's not always there because she has two other offices.
She requests additional staff, too. Right?
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
Sir Attorney?
Nothing illegal, but, uh, just to, to thank, uh, the manager and the council for, uh, the well wishes that I received while I was out. And it's, the last time I saw Councilmember Valentes, he was going into Jupiter Medical and I was being wheeled out, so this is a much better setting.
Really? Wow.
Much better to see you here.
Glad to have you back here.
Welcome back.
It's important. Okay, so I think that concludes our, uh, reports this evening. At this time, if anyone has a petition they'd like to present to the council, that would be the time to do that. Seeing no petitions, I'm closing the floor to petitions and for the remainder of the night. Uh, statements from the public on non-agenda items or items on a consent agenda. Diane, do we have any, uh, vast statements that came in?
Uh, no, Mayor.
Non-agenda or, okay. Great. We have anyone with their hands raised?
No, Mayor.
You sure?
Yes, I'm positive.
We still live the post-world of COVID. We, we, you can't take away some, I've learned, you don't take away something that you provided to your citizens, all right? So we still have that opportunity for citizens to, if they want to participate, they could do it remotely, so. I have not received many comment cards this evening, but if anyone who is here who'd like to make a comment on a non-agenda item or a consent agenda item, now is the time. Seeing none, all right, I'm closing the floor to non-agenda items and consent agenda items. And with that, Diane, can you give us the consent agenda? Take a deep breath.
Absolutely. Yes, I will. Thank you. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of July sixth, twenty twenty-three, council budget workshop of July sixth, twenty twenty-three, and council special meeting of July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Two, approval and authorization for the mayor to execute the eighth addendum to the Law Enforcement Service Agreement, lying between the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office and the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Three, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the first addendum, alcoholic beverage sales agreement, between the Village and Professional Concessions Incorporated to provide for the first two-year renewal term beginning October first, twenty twenty-three, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Four, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the second addendum to provision of services agreement between the Village of Royal Palm Beach and Haverland AG Innovations Incorporated, between the Village and Haverland AG Innovations Incorporated, to provide for the second and final one-year renewal term, beginning October first, twenty twenty-three, and ending October first, twenty twenty-four. Five, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the third addendum to food and beverage services agreement between the Village and Seeds Cafe LLC, to provide for the second one-year renewal term beginning October first, twenty twenty-three, and ending October first, twenty twenty-four. Six, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the third addendum to lease agreement between the Village of Royal Palm Beach and Vertex Construction LLC for the continued use of unoccupied space within the David B. Farber Building relative to the Village Hall Construction Project. Seven, approval and authorization for the mayor to execute a modification to subgrant agreement between the Florida Division of Emergency Management and the Village of Royal Palm Beach to extend the term of the original grant agreement for the development of a watershed master plan to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, SW two-three-zero-four. Eight, adoption of resolution number twenty-three-twenty-six, resolution of the Village Council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Florida Division of Cultural Affairs Cultural Facilities Program, requesting two hundred thousand dollars in grant funds for the village's recreation center, Project PR two-two-zero-one, and further authorizing an amount of four hundred thousand dollars as required matching funds, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Nine, adoption of resolution number twenty-three-twenty-five, resolution of the Village Council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, adopting a new comprehensive update to the Human Resources Policies and Procedures Manual for the village, providing for revisions to the Policy and Procedures Manual by adoptance, adopting certain amendments through which affect, in part, various chapters set forth therein, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Ten, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into a renewal contract with Calladog Dr., plus and a renewal contract with Cigna Healthcare to provide health, dental, and vision, New York Life for Life Disability Insurance, and Aetna Resources for Living for EAP for the employees of the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Eleven, adoption of resolution number twenty-three-twenty-nine, resolution of the Village Council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, specifically repealing resolution number nineteen-twenty-seven along with the associated Exhibit A, and for providing for the adoption of a newly revised primary sports provider policies and procedures, which will supersede and replace previous policies and procedures, providing that such policies and procedures will be made applicable to various sports providers that are recognized by the Village of Royal Palm Beach in the future of specific sports, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Twelve, adoption of resolution number twenty-three-thirty, resolution of the Village Council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, recognizing the Youth, Youth Baseball Association of Royal Palm Beach Incorporated as a primary provider of youth baseball and youth softball in the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Thirteen, adoption of resolution number twenty-three-thirty-one, a resolution of the Village Council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, recognizing Royal Palm Beach Soccer Incorporated as a primary provider of youth soccer in the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Fourteen, adoption of resolution number twenty-three-thirty-two, a resolution of the Village Council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, recognizing the Royal Palm Beach Stars Incorporated as a primary provider of youth travel basketball in the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Fifteen, adoption of resolution number twenty-three-thirty-three, a resolution of the Village Council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, recognizing the Palms West Athletic Association as a primary provider of youth football and cheer in the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Sixteen, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the third addendum to purchase agreement for the provision of sports lighting equipment and services with Musco Sports Lighting LLC for Royal Palm Beach Commons Park Driving Range and Vivian A. Farron Memorial Park Lighting. The cost for said lighting and equipment shall not exceed four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, and funds will come from Project PR one-nine-zero-three. Seventeen, approval of special event permit for the Royal Palm Brewing Company to hold an Oktoberfest celebration at five-four-three North State Road, Seventh Suite, one-oh-three, in the Commons at Royal Palm Beach Shopping Plaza. The event will take place on Saturday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, from eleven AM until ten PM. Eighteen, approval and authorization in accordance with established policy to make a budget amendment for Fund three-oh-one in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget. Said amendment to transfer a total of two-point-seven million dollars from Fund three-oh-four fund balance to Crestwood North Park, PR two-one-zero-two. Nineteen, approval of the bid award in the amount of two million nine hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety cents, and authorization for the village manager to execute a contract with the lowest responsive, responsive, responsible bidder, Waypoint Contracting Incorporated for Crestwood North Park, PR two-one-oh-two.
Okay, that's a mouthful. All right, now, we had nineteen items on our consent agenda. I gotta believe at least one's gonna get pulled, no?
Well, I'll take that challenge.
It's not a challenge, it was a petition.
I'll take the eighteen and nineteen, please.
Eighteen and nineteen? You agree that? You want, you want nineteen?
I'm good.
Everything else is good?
The same thing, so we'll get there one way or the other.
Okay, if there are no other comments or questions from members on council, with the exception of, uh, agenda, consent agenda item eighteen and nineteen, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
We have a, uh, motion in a second, all in favor? All right, any opposed? All right, Diane, let the record show that consent agenda items one through seventeen were approved five-zero. Who wants to speak first on eighteen?
The question that I have is, first of all, that we're transferring two-point-seven million dollars from the fund balance. So if we could talk a little bit about the Crestwood North Park and just summarize what was changed and what we're doing with that, that the funds are needed. And then with nineteen, because I think you can do both of them then, is the difference in two-point-seven million to two-point-nine million? Thanks.
Essentially, when we put the project into the budget, I guess it was in ninety-seven, we put a million-dollar placeholder to go after grants. Uh, and initially, when we applied, it, it started with basically a pavilion, playscape, basketball court, and kind of open fields, you know, the four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar plan plus the, the site improvements. Uh, then obviously, as the project evolved, we brought on a, a designer. Uh, the Parks and Rec looked at the, the, uh, the programs that, that we needed within the area. Uh, so things like pickleball, tennis, uh, lighting the courts were added. The, and by adding those facilities, we needed a little bit more parking, uh, the circulation of that. Uh, there was, uh, a hydrant service that had to be brought in to the park, so there was essentially costs with that. And then, of course, uh, inflation over the, of the last several years, so. And we, we would have addressed it in this budget cycle and, and obviously, uh, brought that as, as a change to the budget. But we knew we wanted to bid this now and, and get it underway because there are grant deadlines that are, that are out there, so that's kind of where we landed. So, and, and then the other explanation, there is, uh, uh, some other items that are gonna be coming to you, uh, that we're gonna be direct purchasing. The playscape is gonna be, the installation is included in, in this bid, but we're gonna purchase, uh, the, the lighting facilities directly from Musco because we save on tax and, and cost as it relates to that, the playscape, uh, the, the pavilions and some of the shaped structures. So that'll be coming, uh, as another item. So, so there are some additional costs that are coming your way, um, that are coming from the existing budget, so.
The, the site plan that is presented to you is the one that we presented six to eight months ago when we, when we went through planning and zoning in the council. And then we worked with the neighborhood to get the, the buffer right and everything, so all that's been taken care of. I will say that from that site plan, there were a few things reduced, about six hundred thousand dollars worth of stuff reduced from, from what we bid, uh, to, because it is, the numbers are high. And, and the numbers, construction costs are coming in high now. So we did do some, I hate to say value engineering because it was really more cutting things out. Um, we cut out some pavilions, left the key ones in there. I think some lighting changed.
Yes, some of, some of the perimeter lighting we, we took out of there. But the core lighting's still gonna be there. Obviously, the, the, the facility lighting will be there, and security lighting will remain.
What grants do we have on this?
Uh, we have a, a land and water grant on it, four-hundred thousand.
Because it is adjacent to the canal, and we have some, some amenities that are associated with that, too.
So we did talk about putting in the, the fishing pier and the launch and everything, okay.
Yeah, with, fortunately, the, the developer had to put a seawall along it, so as part of this project, we're gonna be bringing ADA accessibility down there, adding a walkway adjacent to that seawall, and then creating openings in, in the railing so for boat access and, and obviously to improve the ability to fish off there.
And then the items that were removed at this time, is there the ability to add them in, in a future date?
That, that's.
And then I'm assuming then the difference in the two price for the two-hundred thousand is based on what we already had budgeted for it, so we only need to transfer two-point-seven instead of the whole two-point-nine?
When, when you look the, uh, the total of it, that essentially, because remember, there are some additional costs, some significant costs for the lighting and everything. Yeah, so there's, there's actually more to be budgeted, uh, once we, we purchase the lighting playscape and.
Okay, so this is the precautionary side, okay.
Right, and then there, there's a, a, a small contingency, I think seventy thousand beyond that.
Thank you.
So as, as you said, um, we, um, did have a conversation, in fact, a pretty lengthy conversation with the, uh, surrounding neighborhood. Uh, and we did make some adjustments to, to the plan to accommodate some of their concerns, right?
That is correct. And, and that is in this, and that, that did not come out. There were some adjustments, adjustments to the landscaping, uh, where we swapped out royals for, for oaks, but that actually, I think, will be an improvement for the adjacent neighbors. And there was one specimen banyan that, that we took out of there, but that was more center of the park, so it, it wasn't buffering. Any, all the buffering material, material that, that was promised, it's, it's still part of this project.
Good. Uh, and you did say we, we did have a grant.
Yes.
And part of the, yes. Part of the urgency comes from trying to meet the timeline on that grant, right? But by comparison with the total number.
It is big.
Yeah, what was it, four-hundred-and-fifty thousand? Who's that?
Four-hundred thousand.
Four-hundred thousand, okay. Thank you.
General, for the questions from members on council on agenda items, consent agenda items eighteen and nineteen, I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items eighteen and nineteen.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that consent agenda items eighteen and nineteen were approved five-zero. And with that, we'll move to our regular agenda, starting with a regular agenda item R-one. Is a public hearing to consider application number two-two-dash-one-one-three, an application by Jess Santa Maria and Lilbeth Leon, an adoption of resolution two-three-dash-two-one, confirming council, confirming council's action. The applicant is seeking a special exception use approval for, uh, to allow for a state licensed massage therapist establishment within the general commercial zoning district for a property located at six-seventy-five Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. This is a quasi-judicial process, so whoever will be participating will.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you state your names for the record?
Anybody here on that vehicle?
Christopher Santa Maria.
Lilbeth Leon.
Thank you. Can you, can you raise your right hands for me? I swear you and I swear in staff at the same time. Bradford, thank you. Do you all swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'll turn back to the council for any ex parte disclosures on this item.
To staff.
Thank you.
Staff. Bradford, you're up.
Yes, sir. Great, thank you. The applicant is seeking a special exception use approval to allow for a state licensed massage therapist establishment on a property currently constructed and site planned as an inn in various commercial uses. The property is situated within the general commercial zoning district located at six-seven-five Royal Palm Beach Boulevard, pursuant to section twenty-five, thirty-two, F-four. The proposed special exception is consistent with the standards of the village's comprehensive plan, complies with development regulations of the village code, does not have adverse environmental impacts, does not have adverse vehicle or pedestrian traffic impacts, does not have an adverse impact upon public facilities, does not have an adverse impact on adjacent properties, is compatible with the character and living conditions of the existing neighborhood, does not have an adverse impact on property values in adjacent areas, and not detrimental to the improvement or development of adjacent property. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered the application on June twenty-seventh and recommended approval by vote of four to zero. Village staff is recommending approval of this application with, with the following conditions, site-specific conditions. This special exception use approval shall become null and void should the operator change or cease to operate at this location. The establishment shall take its last customer no later than eight PM and shall be closed to the public no later than nine PM nightly. Windows within the suite number one-thirty-two shall not be tinted or blacked out. Visibility shall be maintained into the suite utilized for massage therapy at all times. And the applicant shall provide a renewed license for the operation of the massage therapy at this location within thirty days of council approval or before the operation of the massage therapy establishment at this location. And with that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bradford. Like, applicant like to make any comments?
Chris Santa Maria.
Hi, Chris, how you doing?
Uh, I represent the owner of the hotel. We have a few, uh, bays within the hotel that are reserved for commercial tenants. And so one of the small bays, a four-hundred square foot space, uh, formerly was a hair salon, and, and I have the co-applicant here. She's a operator of a massage therapy business, and we're simply applying for a special exception for her to conduct her, uh, massage therapy. If you have any questions for her, she can.
Okay. Would you like to make any comments, or you just want to take questions? Okay. All right, before, before we take comments from the council, Diane, do we have any previous, uh, requests, public comments on this agenda item? Ray, anyone have their hand raised, agenda item R-one? Okay. I have not received any comment card. If not, I'm going to close public comment on this agenda item and opening up the comments and questions for members of council. So who's?
My, my only thought is, um, are there any other, I guess this would be to Chris, any other bays within the, uh, and I should know this because I drive through there, um, a lot, uh, with the same use? This, this would be the only.
This is the only.
Yeah, that's what I.
The next door bay is the barber shop that's been there for a long time.
That's what I.
And we have the, uh, Patagonia restaurant, uh, it's in that same corridor.
All right. Thanks. That's it.
Do you want to go ahead? You can go ahead. Um, I have a couple questions. In this backup, we don't have a layout because 400 square feet is very small. So, and it says it's a spa. So what services do they provide?
Massage therapy, it says only massage and facial.
Okay. And then how many can you, uh, how many customers can you, um, accommodate at one time?
Yeah, only appointment by, by appointment. It's one customer for time, you know?
Okay. And then do you have any other massage therapy businesses within the county?
No.
This is your only one?
Yeah.
Okay. I think just because there's, and I can direct these to, to staff as far as the layout of the bay, is that it's just one bed that's in there. Is there adequate space to have a receiving area, um, a therapy room, a changing facility? Is that what you normally need for a massage or a, or a facial?
Yes, we weren't provided with a floor plan, so the applicant probably would be better suited to answer that question.
There's, it, it was previously at one point years ago that it was a hotel room. So there is a private bathroom within the bay. So for changing and things of that nature, the door, there's, there's privacy there for any, anyone to change.
Okay. I think I'm, I'm concerned just considering the nature of the business and the location, the, uh, limited clientele that can come in. So I think that's where I'm just kind of a little concerned about it. I understand it, it's great that you have the space and that you're willing to offer it up. I think that's just my concern is, yeah, certainly.
Let me, before you, hold on, before you speak, state your name for the record. Let me swear you in. Thank you. Raise your right hand for me. Do you swear affirm the other one? Right, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Go ahead.
Um, when we first saw the spa, like the space, we did have the same concerns as you did. And, uh, right now we are trying to figure out the way to kind of, I guess, encircle the spa room. So for the client's privacy and, you know, comfort. And we do have a reception area where the desk is going to be and the computer. And she will be have two seats with like, um, like a little area for them to wait or to say it, maybe just to come in and make their appointment. If they choose to make their appointments in person and not like online or with the phone. And then she, like he said, she does have the bathroom and it's a really big bathroom also for privacy and changing of the clients.
Okay. And then, um, are all the services provided only in this bay or are services provided in other parts of the area?
Yes, the same room will be for facials and massages.
But, so if I'm a customer and I call you and I would like to have a massage and there, the space is already reserved, are, are you offering services in other parts of the hotel?
Can you come to my room?
Can you correct? That's what I, right.
Yeah, it's within that bay only.
Only that room is where their services are provided.
From what I understand, she's saying it's only one customer at a time. So she won't have a second person that can.
Right. But if I'm staying in the hotel, I can't say, well, I don't want to come down there. I feel more comfortable. Can you come into my room and do it there? She will, okay. That's what I'm, thank you.
And if I, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I could just make one more comment to, um, councilwoman's comment, the approval, should there be an approval tonight? It's specific to the bay that's listed in this development order. So they would only be allowed to provide those services in that specific bay. And if the services were to be provided somewhere other than that bay, that would technically be a violation and, and could be handled through code enforcement.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, you have questions?
Yeah, just one question. Um, so we've read that you can go till, you know, the last customer at eight o'clock, but what are your hours going to be?
Monday to Saturday from 10:00 AM on 7:00 PM.
Perfect. Thank you.
No questions? I just have one question. Um, over the years, we've had various massage parlors, uh, operations. Have we imposed all of the same conditions that we traditionally impose on, on these, these, uh, operations?
Yes, sir.
All right. So I just want to make sure that we, we did, we did do that. Um, okay. If there are no further questions, then for members on council, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item R1?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane let the record show that, uh, agenda item R1 was approved, approved 5-0. Good luck and congratulations.
Good luck.
Okay. Agenda item R2 is a public hearing to consider application number 22-63, an ordinance number 1036, an application by Royal Palm Brewing Company, amending the village code to amend sections 26-75.2 and 26-89, to eliminate the current prohibition on outdoor seating in patron congregation directly abutting residential zoning districts, which will allow for such subject to variance approval and increase the square footage limitation required, uh, requested for a property located, well, let me go back, to increase the footage limitation for brew pubs and micro breweries from 5,000 to 6,000, that's a square feet, I guess, it's not here, square feet specifically requested by the property located at 543 North State Road 7, Suite 103. This is also a quasi judicial process, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Where am I?
Can you state your names for the record?
George Shetka.
Anybody else going to speak?
Pamela Shetka.
Thank you.
And Jeffrey Shetka.
Can you raise your right hands for me? And I'll swear you all in at the same time. Do you all swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And I'll turn back to the council for any ex parte disclosures.
Staff. Staff.
I attended the P and Z meeting on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank, thank you again, Mayor. Um, the applicant, Royal Palm Brewery Company is requesting a text amendment to village's code, um, section 2675.2 and 2689, to eliminate the current prohibition on outdoor seating in patron congregation, directly abutting residential zoning districts, which would allow for such use subject to variance approval by village council and to increase the square footage limitation of brew pubs and micro breweries from 5,000 to 6,000 square feet. On this slide is a summary of the proposed text amendments. The additions are underlined, the deletions are stricken. There has been a change to the permitting mechanism, um, from the last meeting to allow for outdoor seating areas of patron congregation directly abutting residential districts from a special exception approval to a variance approval by village council. Additionally, this text amendment will allow again a maximum 6,000 square feet of brew pubs and micro breweries up from a maximum square footage of 5,000 square feet. This application, um, has been reviewed by the planning zoning commission and the application was approved by a vote of five to zero. And staff is recommending approval of this text amendment. And I'll turn the floor back over to Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. The applicant like to make any comments?
Yeah, we did, uh, we did bring a presentation. If we can show it, um, if you want to see it. First of all, we want to thank everybody for having us. It's been, what, six years, I think, since we last.
Has it been that long already? Wow.
Like a blink of an eye.
We must be having fun. I don't know.
We're having a blast. The, uh, uh, but with that said, we also want to apologize for missing the last meeting. We.
It's okay. Don't worry about it.
We watched it online. It was, it was great.
Did you have some popcorn?
Till we asked about it.
Yeah, well, we were doing bingo, so we apologize.
We didn't know about the meeting, so unfortunate.
So Pam's going to start it off. I don't know why that, how does that go backwards? How do you? All right, so I don't know how to get rid of that. Minimize it. Some sort of a volume thing on here. Whoops, wrong thing. We get some, we get some technical assistance here if somebody's. Don't hit that.
I have like all their microphones.
Bradford's been helping us out the whole time, so why not? Why stop now?
We're, we're trying to do.
We can read.
There you did it. All right. So Jeff, my husband George and myself, we're all co-owned, family-owned business. We currently employ, uh, 14 employees besides ourselves, six full-time, eight part-time. We are Royal Palm Beach's first and only international award-winning brewery, bringing state and national recognition to our village, which we're very proud of. You can join us and come in and see all the beautiful medals hanging on the wall. Uh, we just celebrated our fifth anniversary, March of this year. We continue to support our community in various ways, including Palm Beach County's back-to-school fund, uh, food drive, uh, this, this past year. We've also donated, and I think this number's a little skewed, but $16,000 to families in need, local charities, uh, foundations. We do a lot with Grandma's Place down the street. Um, we also did a special release, uh, beer benefiting, um, one of my son's friends that had, uh, cancer. Uh, most recently cash donations to Grandma's Place, uh, from our gingerbread house competition and beat the brewers fantasy football league. A lot of our customers decide they want to play and do all the fun stuff and then they give the money back and then we can pass it along. We did a toy drive this year and, um, the toys all went to Grandma's Place as well. Wanted to keep it kind of local and, um, next. All right. Um, we temporarily had outdoor seating due to COVID, which most of you know. It ran from June 12th, 2020 to March 21st, 2022. And as the mayor said earlier, you cannot take away what you've already given. It makes very light, um, brings a light to a situation where the customers that are used to it, need it, want it, don't, don't have it any longer. Um, so we're asking the council to allow us to provide the following to grant a variance to again make our once temporary seating available to our guests and patrons on a permanent basis, allow us to grow our business by increasing our footprint currently allotted at 5,000 square feet to 6,000 square feet. That's my part of it. I don't know if anybody has questions about that or if we want to keep going. You're up.
All right. So, um, impact of COVID-19, um, restaurants operate on a paper-thin margin. Uh, 2020, or 2020 COVID pandemic, uh, shutdown was especially tough on restaurants and breweries. Uh, that being said, um, you know, at one point we had 200 bucks in our business checking account, um, because of this. Um, that was just before, uh, the restrictions were lifted. Um, so what happened to our business? A restaurant license allowed us to serve to-go beer, um, and food as well as offer limited seating of 19 people, our 25% capacity. Uh, with the village approved temporary outdoor seating, that helped us increase our capacity to 40 people. Uh, so, and then also federal government programs such as PPP, SBA loans, uh, helped bring our employees back and, you know, give us a boost into, uh, rejuvenating our, our business. Um, so what are the benefits of outdoor seating? So Americans spend roughly, um, 90% of their time indoors. So, um, when they don't have to spend their time indoors, it's nice to let them be outdoors. Um, outdoors dining reduces stress, uh, can lower blood pressure and, uh, it decreases the spread of diseases. Um, also it provides uncontaminated airspace for those with, uh, airborne food allergies such as gluten. Um, increase in revenue to offset costs. Um, outdoor seating is free advertising for our business. Um, it lets people know that, you know, there is actually life on that side of Plaza. Um, since passing the minimum wage increase in 2020, uh, porter server and minimum wages will increase over 77% by 2025. Um, and then with inflation and all that good stuff, uh, raw material costs, um, so grain has increased by 50%. Um, all hops have increased, some of them up to over 100% in price since the pandemic. Um, and then aluminum cans, everybody's putting their beer in aluminum cans, so price of that goes up. All right. And then so business hours. So we propose a 10:00 PM closing, uh, if we are granted the outdoor seating, um, closing the outdoor seating at 10, uh, at 10:00 PM, um, providing ample time before the closing of, or before the, uh, 11:00 PM village noise ordinance. Um, since the day we opened, uh, we've never stayed open late, uh, due to, you know, issues. We don't want to have to deal with, you know, post-concert, um, stuff, shenanigans, if you will. Um, so, uh, and then our peak times, um, you know, during the weekdays is from 6 to 8:00 and, uh, late afternoon to 9:00 PM on the weekends. Um, our business drop dramatically drops after 9:00 PM. So this is just kind of a synopsis of, so the top squiggly graph, um, that's week by week, there's 52 little sections there. And it just kind of shows you how, uh, you know, our sales by hour go. Uh, the two major points that you see is our Oktoberfest, you know, in the late September region and then beginning of the year, that's, uh, our mug club renewal. So, um, and then with that being said, so you can see, um, our busiest times or busiest days are Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And then, um, usually kicks off at, you know, obviously 12:00 and right steadily rises till about 9:00 o'clock where it dramatically drops off at 10:00 and then there's absolutely nothing at 11:00. All right. So what we did and, and we mapped the area for those that haven't been to the brewery, um, we do border Bellatera. Uh, so what we did is we went ahead and mapped it out and the outdoor seating is spaced where the, the dot is. And essentially to the, the road that we abut, that we face, the Bellatera's private drive, it's 178 feet and, uh, eight inches. And then when you look at the actual sound wall that's been installed in Bellatera where the residents actually live, it's 208 feet and some inches, but about 208 feet. Um, we understand and, and we fully appreciate the concerns, you know, council has concerns in the village about, you know, we're next to a neighborhood, you know, after seating there's going to be issues. So of course the first thing we did is we reached out to Bellatera and said, is this going to be something, it's going to be all right? And they gave us our approval. If you look back in 2018 and, and right after we opened, they're like, yeah, we love you guys, come on back. We attend their fall festivals, we're great neighbors with them. We're actually signed up to do it again this year. Be handing out koozies with our name and their names on it. Um, and we also have, uh, you know, talked to Bradford and the village staff, I guess, is about planter boxes and what we're proposing to use. And, um, those will be on the next thing. I'll show those. These are the CDC and, and NASH, uh, noise levels and what kind of, kind of tells you what decibels are, because that's really what we're talking about when you talk about noise is decibels. How loud are, is it? How loud are things? Uh, normal conversation is 60 decibels. A whisper is 30. Those are important numbers. Um, here's a kind of a layout of what we, we presented to, um, planning and zoning for our outdoor seating. As you can see, there's three tables, uh, possibly room for four if we measure and do whatever, but just to be safe, we put the three in there. Uh, and the bottom right is the, uh, planter boxes that we propose that have a four-foot tall, four-foot wide and then little planter boxes on the bottom. They are portable, movable, so we can bring them in. Um, so again, there's that. Now, what we did is we, kind of hard to figure out on a, on a level of 12, what, what it is based on the, uh, uh, the information we got from the CDC and the NASH conversation levels. So we did, as we said, 16, because we can do that. So if we base everything on, on a level of 16, people talking at the same time, the
So if we base everything on a level of sixteen, people talking at the same time, the decibel level on the patio, that's if nobody's listening, everybody's talking at each other, it's going to be seventy-two decibels, which is, you know, above normal conversation. And as it works, the number of people doubles, the decibel increases by three decibels, and our proposed patio, like I said, is sixteen, so. Twelve, but we're doing it on sixteen, just for easy numbers. So again, for the doubling of the distance of the noise source, the sound pressure decreases by six decibels. What does that mean? So if you start at three feet, your decibel's automatically, let's drop ten decibels. When you double that to six feet, the decibels go down by six, and so on and so forth. So there's a graph here that kind of shows you how it all works. So basically, if you have sixteen, seventeen, sixteen people sitting at our patio, at seventy-two decibels, they're all talking to each other at the same time, and by the time it gets to that two-hundred-foot level, or two-hundred, one-hundred-and-ninety-two, it's actually less than the two-oh-eight, your noise level drops to twenty-eight decibels. So a whisper is thirty, it's twenty-eight at the wall. We did an example, I tried to attach a video on here and I can't, couldn't do it, but we have a Husqvarna leaf blower that we use to sweep off the the leaves and all that stuff. So we ran it, and there's a picture on here for this as well, but at ten feet away, the Husqvarna was eighty-nine point nine decibels or ninety decibels, right? Which is equivalent to having five-hundred-and-twelve people on the patio, which would be awesome for us financially, but we'll never have.
Get a little crowded.
It would be crowded, but man, it would be awesome. So anyways, at two-hundred feet, that decibel level drops to sixty-three, which is, again, just over a normal conversation. And as an example, and I know there's some concern, and I looked in the village code and I might be wrong, but when I looked at it, it said airplanes don't count and highway noise, but it didn't say idling trucks in parking lots. And I'm, like, maybe somebody can correct me on that. But with that said, there are deliveries that take place at PetSmart and all that stuff behind, and there's trucks idling back there and we're taking out the trash. And, you know, I looked this up too, the Federal Highway Administration says you can't be more than eighty-five decibel at fifty feet. So in that same amount of space, again, a Husqvarna at eighty-nine decibels at our areas is actually going to be less by the time it gets to that wall than a truck idling at a hundred and twenty-nine feet. And again, according to the same source, the decibel level's dropped by about ten. Again, this is just information I found when it hits a sound wall, so. Well below, but there you can see it's ninety, there's Jeff doing his thing, and then I went way back and had to yell at him. He couldn't hear me when I was yelling, like, go hit it, and then it went to sixty-three. But with a copy of the ordinance on there, that's that. But the biggest thing is, is in the conclusion as we go forward, is we are asking for a variance and we're asking for your help today, because A, the community overwhelmingly supports and wants outdoor seating. They had it, they loved it. Our taproom numbers have dropped since it's gone away. Thankfully, our distribution numbers are up, but that's also twofold as well. Raw materials rent and employee costs have risen dramatically since 2019, of course. And again, the science, I just, you know, kind of give a brief description on how sound works and it gets to the area there. More importantly, or very importantly, is our neighboring community Bellatera has given us written permission. And also, history has shown, like I said, we had that outdoor seating from June to, of 2020 to March of 2022. We, we didn't have any, we had zero documented complaints from the village, from our neighbors, any of that stuff. There's, you know, I know last council meeting, there were some questions about trash, things like that. I talked to Daisy today. She's one that takes care of all that stuff in the day. If we miss it, she gets it. If she misses it, we're going to bend over, pick up a bag that's blown over from Dollar Tree, or we're going to sweep up a cigarette butt if it's on the floor, which came from our, if some of you know, we took over the Allstate building, but they smoked a lot out there, so we don't take all the blame on that. But we do clip, we do pick them up. And then also, and importantly, is we, as a brewery, have an unfair competitive disadvantage with other restaurants and bars, which, again, as I said, distribution has really improved, increased, competition has grown since we opened, you know. World of Beer didn't exist, they were closed. They're open now, they're in Royal Palm, guess whose beer they have? Ours. Guess what you can do? You can sit outside and eat there. You can sit inside, you can do trivia bingo, all the things they do. Papa Chulo's is our number-one customer right down the street, right? They carry our Half Moon Island all the time. When we opened, they were a rundown Burger King, which then turned into Azxby, which is now thankfully a thriving business in the community, and we love them. But that's the thing, so we're not being able to offer that outdoor dining, so we're at a competitive disadvantage. And then lastly, and I think the one that just really kind of hits us, and we brought it up every time, we've been in here the last three times, is that if we could, where we're sitting, have outdoor seating under the current village code, if we bought our beer from a distributor and didn't manufacture it ourselves in-house. So if we were to take our tanks out, not make beer in the brewery, and order it from Progressive, have our buddies up in Orlando at Bowegans make it, we could buy all of our beer, sell it the same way, nobody be any wiser if there's beer in that tank or not. They could be empty, we could cancel our CMB license, and we could serve beer in our place where we're at right now outside. Any questions or any concerns?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Before we take questions, do we have any advanced comments, public comments on agenda item R2? Really, you have any hands raised? I've not received any comment cards on agenda item R2. If anyone would like to comment, I'll give you that opportunity. Seeing none, I'm going to close the floor to public comment on agenda item R2 and Selena.
Couple of questions, but first of all, why, if there's the opportunity to move into the bay that is just to the east of you, why have you not moved in there and then it would not have any of this?
We can't.
And why not?
We are only allowed to have five thousand square feet, that's why we moved the other way, because we have four thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine square feet now. We cannot do it. Bradford and I had the conversation, he said, you have to go through, because when Lorelei opened up, that's the very first thing we wanted to do, because outside, he even said, and Bradford and I have had conversations back and forth, is man, you're facing four forty-one, that whole wide-open area, man, we would love to have that. Friendly's, can't move into Friendly's. A brewery, if they moved into right now, else included, cannot move into Friendly's because we are limited to five thousand square feet.
So from a staff persp, well, from a village perspective then, would it have made more sense that we would have changed the square footage of what a brew pub is allowed, instead of going through all of this?
Okay, so before you deny it is the text amendment. Just back up where we're at. We have gone through a few iterations of this text amendment. The text amendment, at one point in time, was to allow eight thousand square feet. And that was to accommodate the move to the salon, right? But then there were circumstances that arose where they wanted to move into the Allstate, which didn't need the eight thousand, just needed the six thousand with the outdoor seating, and that's how we arrived at six thousand today.
So it was there, so it was the brewery's decision not to move into that area?
I don't know if it was their decision or circumstances.
I think it was a time, I think it was a timing thing. It's, it's, if, when it was available, and it's available for a short period of time, to lock that up in a lease, and then to, the investment of moving from one location to another is very, very significant. And then to do that and hope that this got approved, that was, I think it was, at that timing, I don't think.
So the very first thing we did is, we reached out to our landlord and said, can we get some sort of an abatement on this? We literally, when we moved into Allstate, when they moved out, because it's under the five thousand, it's, it was right before the holidays. I remember I called Bradford and I said, it was the best gift I could have got, is that we could move in there. And because the thing is, is we got zero rent abatement. We took that over on the Allstate building on June first, we paid rent June first. And we're still, we're paying right now, and it still hasn't opened. We're opening this weekend or next week, whatever, who knows? Coming up, we're opening the whole thing up. But it wasn't that we didn't choose to do it, because we would have done that in a heartbeat. The problem is, we can't do it. And it's been five hundred and eleven days since we submitted our first application for this, and there is no way we could have afforded five hundred and eleven days of rent. The place is still sitting empty. I'm sure my landlord would love to say hindsight's twenty-twenty, like, yo, she doesn't give it to him, we'll let him sit on it. But there's no way we're going to invest that kind of money. We just spent fifty thousand dollars to move into a Allstate, that we were going to spend probably a hundred and fifty thousand to go into that one, not knowing we could have it. If we could have sat down like this and had this conversation right away, we would have done it and said, maybe we can go, but that's, there's processes we have to take.
Well, and the other thing is, you're also saying, you're using the argument that the outdoor seating is going to give you more space to accommodate more customers, but the addition of the Allstate bay is going to do that?
Yes, inside.
Correct. So you are getting that extra space inside there?
Correct.
Right.
And that's why we're asking for the six thousand square feet, because right now we're not allowed to go to six, to even have outdoor seating. So if you decline, or you vote no on six thousand square feet, that's a moot point.
So just for clarification then, what's in front of us today is to change the square footage of a brew pub to six thousand square feet, not outdoor seating?
Both.
Yeah, both.
Okay, so there are.
Which the other thing is, if we, again, so we were asked at the planning and zoning meeting, or the commission meeting twice, because we've done this twice now, is why did you guys not ask for more? And we've gone back and forth on that. We will ask for more if our, if and when we can recuperate these costs, our business grows, and if it glorily stays open, we'll be back doing this again, asking for that space, and then moving that outdoor seating over there. We cannot financially afford to move into that right now.
So I'll tell you my concern about this is just because it is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's blanket. So it's pretty much any business that fits this qualification, they are now allowed outdoor seating next to residential. It's not just.
No, only brew pubs, brew pubs only. But they're not allowed. The council still maintains the ability.
But you're asking everybody to come in here for variance. You're asking each time to come in here for variance.
But understand, the fundamental change that's really happening is the way our code was written originally, I don't know why, we didn't have the option of providing a variance, alright? If a case was made by an establishment to have outdoor seating. So now this opens it up and gives us the opportunity to say yes or no. And remember, we're talking about scenarios where the establishment is abutting, okay, right, abutting to a residential area.
Right, so the other.
So that, the location is what drives the ordinance, if anything.
Well, and I've been here the six years for when you first came in and asked for this. So as I recall, we have accommodated for all of your requests that you've made. So is it that you weren't sure?
We have not. The only reason.
What did we not do?
What we, we gave the outdoor seating as a COVID issue.
I understand, we did that with all of our restaurants, yes.
No, I'm saying, but we didn't make any special accommodation for them. We just said, what could we do to help the businesses? And that was the feedback we got, if we could provide temporary outdoor seating during the COVID event, which lasted for a long time. That was the only thing that we did.
No, but we created the, except, the use of a brew pub in the village, and we created the text to fall under that, based on guidance from.
Yeah, we create, we had, we didn't have it on our list of the kind of businesses.
Correct, and we.
But that was not done, that was not done just for them. That was done.
I understand that.
Okay.
But that was based on the guidance.
I think what you're asking is originally, when we asked, when we came and it was brought to council, and everybody was going to vote to allow the village attorney to go through and do research to find out other municipalities that have brew pubs, and I know she called Orlando Brewing and she talked to Bowegans, and they were all different scenarios between being in a strip mall, being in a warehouse-type of district. When we originally started this journey, yes, did we want outdoor seating? It was made very clear we wanted outdoor seating then, but because we were already paying rent and trying to get everything open and going through all of the mechanics with the votes and all of that, we were told, get your business open, we can deal with it later. This is what you need to do. We would, we did not have.
Alright, folks, we're having a conversation that's not really relevant to what we need to do tonight.
Though, right? That's what you're asking, is why didn't we come to you and ask for outdoor seating when we were opening?
No, I do recall you asking for outdoor seating, and we said specifically that bay you would not be allowed to have outdoor seating, and you said, that's okay, we'll take it, but I want to make sure we didn't tell you, yes, go ahead, and we'll deal with it later.
It was one of those things, like, we were told, we were given, obviously, every, when you own a brewery or a bar, or whatever you want to call it, everybody gives you advice about everything. We needed to open, right? And most of it, in one or not the other, but we wanted to open, and we needed to open. We had no money left, and our contractor took forever, it's a hole, it doesn't matter. We're here now, right? So what we're asking for and what we're doing, and the reason we're doing this, we would have, and I've said this at the Planning and Zoning Commission too, we would have never asked for this. It was way easier, let me tell you right now, to just say, you guys have outdoor seating? Nah, village won't allow it. Oh, that sucks, yep, and then we move on. It's how we did it. And then all of a sudden, it was, we, as Jeff said, we had two hundred dollars in our account, and we were ready to go under. We were ready to close our business, and then all of a sudden, they said, you guys can have it. And this is, like, like the mayor said, you guys can do this, it's something we're going to do to help you guys, and it helped us, it brought it back. We're back to expanding and having whatever, and the problem is, like I said, our distribution business is doing fine. Our in-house business, we're down fifteen percent since the time we lost our outdoor seating. We lose customers, because they don't come back, because they can go, again, to other locations in the village that serve our beer. Like, why go to the brewery if I can go to Papa Chulo's anywhere?
I want to get other members of council a chance to comment, Jeff?
Yeah, and the outdoor seating is, I think our concern initially was close to a residential area, making noise and serving people, right? And, and of course, there's nothing like actual experience to demonstrate whether or not that concern was justified at the numbers that we had originally put into the, into the ordinance, and obviously, it really wasn't. And so we have the actual proof, which, by the way, I remind everybody that when we do variances, we oftentimes say, so, how did your neighbors feel about that?
We always say that when we do variances.
Alright, so that's kind of one of the things that typically we do. The, the business itself is a unique business, and I say that because I've had, actually, several individuals from Wellington tell me time and time again that they have come after this business because it's unique. And of course, the hope was, we put something in place like this, and we get more than Royal Palm Brewing Company, we get another brewing company, and we get another brewing company, which seem to be very popular and really good businesses that do great things in the community. And unfortunately, so far, we haven't been able to attract any others.
But they don't mind that.
Interestingly enough, in doing, doing the research that I did personally, just to ask around at various places about brewing companies, and whether it's in Tequestor, or whether it was Palm Beach Gardens, when I said that very thing to those managers and those owners about, well, you probably don't really want competition. No, that was completely the opposite. It really was. It's a very collegial, collaborative kind of a, kind of a business. It is unique in a lot of ways. It really is. And that's one of the reasons why it seemed to be a really good idea, and to the village's benefit, not just this business's benefit, to create this ordinance, so that this kind of business could be brought here. And we were just fortunate enough that the family who lived here wanted to create this business. That's great. Wellington would love to have them over there, just saying. I haven't solicited that input. I get it whenever I wind up talking to the village manager over there. So the bottom line is that I think there's evidence that this is not a problem. I think there's been a lot of timing kinds of unfortunate situations that have been dealt with. But I think this seems to be a reasonable approach, so I would support it.
Just a couple, just two more cents, two, you know, it's two cents, right?
Three cents.
Three cents. Royal Palm Beach Brewery and the Village of Royal Palm Beach went down this path that was not uncharted, it was uncharted. And so it's okay, it's okay that it wasn't perfect, it's okay that we're here now. And, you know, in taking that, the past example of being there, and I've never heard any noise complaints. I appreciate the fact that you guys did all the research on the noise. I appreciate the fact that Bella, Sarah doesn't, Bellatera doesn't, has endorsed you, doesn't, you know, want you to be here too. And so I'm in favor of the change as a result of where we've come and where we've been. Keep working on the other parts, you know, just one step at a time.
I wasn't up here when this was created, and I do realize that you guys were the prime motivators or prime movers in having something new, business-wise, come to Royal Palm Beach. And it looks to me, what we have in front of us here today is, when it was set in place, five thousand was something that was agreed to. Well, now we have five years of experience and hearing from you, six thousand something that's doable and it's workable. I don't know, Bradford, is that typical? Or what are we usually looking at with microbreweries and brew pubs? Because I, I have no magic.
There is reasons why the ordinance was written the way it is. You could have a brewery in Royal Palm Beach before they came here, in the industrial zone. We looked at it as an industrial use, not a retail use. And as a, as an industrial use, it came with odors and smells and trucks and deliveries and pickups and things like that. And that was, the breweries have taken that and did the service part. And that's what the brew, that was the, that was the change in the industry and what brew pubs came from. It's like, let's just, let's have the service, let's make it and sell it right on site. So we took it out of the industrial zones and into your commercial zones, and then that's, they were our first, they were the ones that brought it to us, and they were the concerns we had as staff when we were writing this. Well, like, because we didn't want it to be a full-fledged distillery that would be allowed in a industrial zone. So the things that we put in place to keep it a brew pub, where you're making a small amount on site, not distributing it throughout the world,
and then serving your customers, was limiting the square footage, not wanting it close to residential still because of the potential for odors and smells and things like that because it is still a manufacturing operation. So that's where the codes came from. When we looked at everybody else's codes, whether it was in a commercial or industrial site, some, some cities go by just expanding their industrial site to have it a lot more friendly for the customers coming there. The other approach is to go into the commercial sites and make it a lot, make it more restrictive or more friendly to the neighbors in the, in the manufacturing process. They have proven to us in five years that they can coexist in the commercial zone without offensive smells, trucks being, and, and significant trucks that delivers. But that is why we have the, the square footage limited, you know, that's why we're not saying 20,000 square feet. Brew pubs next step, I don't know, I don't know if it's theirs, they never said anything to me, but many brew pubs move to, to stillen a little bit more and make it a good liquor. Um, that would, that, that's a whole nother step, and that's a, if, that's a lot more industrial. Uh, they have, brew pubs have been successful doing that, and it, but it's outside your industrial zone. I think we, I think we still need to be careful of that. Um, and keep this, this industrial use in the commercial area with the service, a little bit controlled with some, with square footage and, and, and the variance or the special exceptions going forward. I mean, I know how we're going forward, and, and, and we're, staff's recommending approval, we're good with this. They've been, they've been, they've unfortunately had to put up with the, the trials and tribulations of creating this here in the commercial zone, um, and taking it out of the industrial zone. And, and since, and, and we have approved that in the new development we did off of State Road 80, we, we, knowing this was coming and working with you, we did go to 6,000 limit on them and, and some of the same things that you're, you're dealing with as far as the residential and all. So that was why we did what we did, and that's why the limitations, um, it was really because you're taking an industrial use and put it into a commercial area.
I guess. Mr. Mayor, I guess this is a Bradford question, but there practically, the difference between going from five to six isn't that big of a deal, is it? It's not like going between five and 10, or, I don't know how big Friendly's is, but when you said Friendly's, I'm like, man, that'd be a heck of a lot bigger, so.
Seventy-seven, seventy-some hun, seventy-something hundred square feet. And then that doesn't include if you have outdoor dining. So outdoor dining's included in that.
You're correct. It's, a thousand square feet isn't a large, um, expansion. We wouldn't consider that a huge expansion.
And then the outdoor seating, the experience has shown us, because I, I know when it's not a brew pub, but I live right off Southern Boulevard, and I, I know it's like right next door to where Duffy's is. They're out there serving people. And it's within not too far of where the condos are. So I can see, on the one hand, you pu- pitch it as a competitive disadvantage, which I see that, but you also kinda get a competitive advantage because you're making the stuff, right? So do they pay less for stuff, or do you pay more for your own stuff to sell the people outside?
It, it's all over the place. I mean, we have a $3,000 manufacturing license we're about to renew. Um, we pay excise tax at the state and federal government. We pay, um, I mean, all sorts of stuff. It, it's not, I wish.
So I, I, I don't know the business, so I didn't know if you made money off of actually selling it to the other bars and got that advantage, and then, uh,
Make about 40%.
Made it up between the not being able to serve it as much. But in, in any event, I, I don't see a problem with either of the requests, so I, I appreciate your, uh, your patience with us.
Thank you.
And, and going through the process.
I don't have a concern going from the 5,000 to the 6,000. I have concern with the outdoor seating on a regular basis. Um, I would prefer to have it, you have your Oktoberfest coming up. I would prefer to say, yes, you can have outdoor space and seating at that time. So for your events like that, instead of a regular basis, that would be the way I would prefer to have it.
And, and I think that, and the one thing that we were gonna mention and we, we did miss is, is, I, I know, I, I, again, I own a business. I, I recognize a lot of your faces here and there, right? So some of us have sat outside, some of us haven't. And, and the biggest thing is, I think the misconception is, as Jeff showed on the, the sign, or on the, the slide, is that when you go there for Oktoberfest, because, oh, it's Oktoberfest, let's run to the brewery, right? Man, these guys are busy. This is crazy. I, I put them up. It's not like that every day. You go there right now, I promise you, there's probably 30 people sitting inside, maybe. Um, if every day was like Oktoberfest, we wouldn't care about outdoor seating because we would need the money. Yeah, we make enough money. So don't let that misconstrue what, you know, and if you go to like our gingerbread house, you know, competition or things like that, we're like, man, these guys are killing it. Like, no, we're not. We're not killing it. We're, we're surviving, we're, we're earning a living, and we're just looking for a little bit more. And that's, that's really what we're doing.
You're good? Any other questions from members on council? Okay, I just wanna say that, um, I think I, I may have articulated it at the last meeting. Um, the whole concept of, of, uh, local elected body having the ability to put in controls to protect our citizens, it's one of the key functions that we serve. Uh, but part of that, of doing that, we have to be practical and, and have a mechanism in place to, uh, uh, address situations that come up that weren't planned, or that was, you know, that manifested, that evolved. And just, although we hate dealing with variances as an elected body, that's one of our responsibilities to do that. And what, what that does is, it gives us the opportunity to look at some things on what we call a case-by-case basis. Because we provided a variance to one establishment, doesn't mean the next one's gonna get the same thing. And one of the key things, and, and, and Councilman Hamara mentioned this, is, um, in that process, we really pay attention to what the experience has been. And you've had the opportunity to, to demonstrate that you could coexist there and operate the outdoor activity and, and do all of those things, and not become a nuisance or disturbance to your neighbors next door. Uh, because we wouldn't know about that if that was the case, believe me. Um, so to me, that's one of the strongest pieces of, of, of information. The, the, uh, comments I made at the last meeting had more to do with the, the structure of what was being presented before us. And I said, I don't want us to advocate the council's ability to regulate where these kind of establishments are put in terms of abutting other residential areas. We don't know what the future holds, right? I said, but let's create the mechanism that we can address that question, because the way it was written before, we didn't really have that option to do that. So tonight, if we say we pass this, we'll be exercising that option for the first time with this particular ordinance in this particular situation.
And, and I know I speak for myself and these guys too, that if, if we are offered a variance and you guys do vote yes, and there are code enforcements, there are issues, there are whatever, we expect you to call us and say, we're taking it away. And, and, and we expect that. It won't happen, but I'm telling you, like, that's, we're, we're, again.
I'm sure it won't come to that because you wouldn't allow it to happen. Exactly, that's right. Go ahead.
Well, my, well, just my, my thought on that point is, and, and you're a stellar example, so that's, you know, uh, I guess we're a, a little bit poisoned by that. But the, the problem that I see with the variance issue, and it's not enough of a problem to, to vote against it, is this is something, correct me if I'm wrong, Middy, this is something that runs with the land. So you guys are doing great, but if you guys, you know, decide to pull up stakes and leave and sell to another outfit that runs the same thing, it, it conveys, doesn't it? Actually, it does. Ask the village attorney. It runs with the land. It's not something that, like, a special exception where someone would have to come in and then apply for it again.
It does. It, the variance, and then this is again, tonight is just the zoning text amendment, but a subsequent application has been made for the actual variance, and variances do run in perpetuity with the land.
Seeing that, that's, that's my concern.
We should address that where we wrote it. Make a note on that, please, Middy.
Is that, that's a concern that I have.
Let's, let's, let's not get carried away with hypotheticals. Let's deal with what's in front of us, okay? But fair point, and I'm asking our attorneys to look at that, if there's a way to address that going forward. Okay, with that said, any other comments from council? Because I'd like to get this to a vote if we can. No? Any, anything else? Um, so with that, uh, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve regular agenda item R2.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, uh, Diane, let the record show that the agenda item R2 was approved 4-1. Good luck, and continue tomorrow.
And so just because, again, now, this is only texted, do we come back for the variance thing, or is this?
Right.
Can we have a second reading, or?
No.
Yeah, we have a second reading for this.
If Bradford can explain the rest of the process, clarify it for everybody. Because we do have, we do have the variance, they do, they did apply. It's going to TSR, I think, this next, next meeting, and I think Bradford knows for a little bit of the schedule going forward.
No, it doesn't say that yet.
Right. So what we have next is, we have a special exception and a variance request. A special exception for the brew pub for 6,000 square feet.
Okay.
The variances to allow for the outdoor seating. And those will be heard at the September, um, 18th P and Z meeting. And then it'll, they will be heard at village council on the 21st. Before that, you'll have the second reading of the ordinance, and then the special exception, and then the variance for the outdoor seating.
Bradford, those variances, though, are on two separate agenda items, or are they combined?
The, it's a variance.
Yep.
And then a special exception. They were, those are two separate items. We don't combine those two, two types of applications. They got three more things coming. The second reading, the variance for the outdoor seating, and the special exception, because it's, the brew pub 6,000 square feet are larger, is a special exception within our code. So whenever they're expanding into that other bay, it has to be reflected in the, their oc, what they, the square footage that they occupy.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
All right, moving right along. Agenda item R3 is a public hearing to consider application 23-092, an application by Corey O'Gorman of Place Planning and Design, and adoption of resolution number 23-27, confirming council action. The applicant is seeking special exception use approval for a public or private academic institution within a general commercial zoning district for a property located at 200 Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. This is a quadriadual process, so the applicant is wanted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you state your name for the record?
Corey O'Gorman.
Thank you. Do you swear from to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I'll turn back to the council for ex parte disclosures.
Village manager.
Go ahead, attend to the meeting, back to your P and Z meeting.
Bradford. Thank you, Mayor. Um, the applicant is seeking a special exception use approval for, to permit a public or private academic institution for grades pre-kindergarten through eighth grade on the subject site, which is located in the general commercial zoning district. The school is seeking to occupy the formerly Western Academy location within the Royal Plaza South Shopping Center, um, to service 150 children with autism. There will be an overall reduction in the number of students at this location. In reviewing the proposed special exception, village staff consider compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistency with the village's comprehensive plan, and conformance with the village's development standards for the general commercial zoning district. More specifically, the proposed special exception meets the review criteria for a special exception. We went over these earlier on in the meeting, so I'm just gonna skip through them. Unless anybody would like to read them. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved this application. Village staff is recommending approval of this application. With that, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. How would you like to make some comments?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Corey O'Gorman. I'm joined this evening with the, uh, executive director and one of the board members from the Learning Center. Uh, we have really nothing to add to the staff presentation. Uh, we appreciate staff's, uh, work with us, uh, the ability to be here this evening. Uh, this is essentially a replacement of a similar use that previously existed with a charter school, a smaller student body. Uh, and, um, we, uh, are here to answer any questions that we can, and appreciate your consideration.
Well, were you able to open your doors on time?
Uh, we're a little late, um, but we're hoping to open next week, subject to, um, the old decision this evening, and, and, uh, one more inspection.
Okay, and you gotta get those inspections done, right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, we're happy to, Diane.
She's coming back.
Oh. Ray, we have any, any hands raised out there, uh, public comment on agenda item R3? Hi, Diane. Do we have any advanced comments on agenda item R3? I have not received any comment cards in this agenda item. If anyone here wants to comment, you can. Seeing none, I will then close the floor to a public comment on agenda item R3, and open up the court questions in council.
I, um, I'd spoken with this issue, uh, about the village manager, and I don't know if it would be you or one of the board members. But, uh, would you briefly be able to explain, because I was very happy with the opportunity that was presented by your wanting to come to the Village of Royal Palm Beach. I have a younger brother who is disabled, and the fact that you're providing a service to, I mean, not only people in Royal Palm Beach, but countywide, my understanding is this is a pretty special facility, a charter school facility, correct?
Yes.
And if you could just, you know, tell us, I, I'm assuming we all know, but tell the people in Royal Palm Beach what you're bringing, the, the asset that I, I believe you're bringing to the community.
Thank you very much. Let me introduce, uh,
Hi, I'm Stacy Rownt. Um, thank you for having us here today. So we are a public charter school. We provide services for ages three to 14, um, all with children on the autism spectrum. Um, we're happy to be in Royal Palm. We've had such warm welcoming's. Um, we're thrilled to have our school here. We're thankful to be here. Um, we provide an extra special service to children on the spectrum. Our ratios are very low, so we're one to one, one to two, or one to three student ratios. We really believe in the difference that we make for these children's futures. Um, everything that we do in the school during the day, we believe in their futures will make a difference. Um, we always say that we have small miracles that happen in the hallways each day, and now these hallways are going to be in Royal Palm Beach.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You said it was age three to?
14, so we have pre-K through eighth grade.
Somebody asked me the question the other day, and I wasn't sure. Was it to 12? Or I wasn't, so I said, I thought it was eight, though. Any other questions?
Just, just one, one, uh, question. Um, as I understand it, you, you found yourself needing an urgent, uh, new home.
Yes.
And, and I, I would just say that we're very fortunate that we have a facility, actually, uh, that was occupied by a similar charter school. Uh, and consequently, uh, that we are able to actually provide you with that kind of home, because it's very exciting.
Very fortunate, yes. And we had Palm Beach County School District actually navigated us to the school here. When we walked in, we knew it was the perfect home.
Right.
Yeah.
We're delighted to have you.
Sure.
So where do they go on after the eighth grade with, at your school?
So we do project to add grades, um, as our students progress. So that's our next step. Once we get school open and running, we'd like to add ninth grade, then 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade.
Your population will just then move up?
Yeah. Is, is that space big enough to accommodate? Um, it's 32,000 square feet, yes.
They had a lot more there at the charter school when my children went there for middle school than you guys are ever gonna have in there, so.
Yeah, I think they had close to 500.
There's enough space.
500.
Okay. Well, any other questions or comments from members on council? Look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number three.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that agenda item R3 was approved 5-0, and good luck.
Good luck, and welcome.
Welcome to the village. Okay, agenda item R4 is a public hearing to consider application number 23-047, an application by HM2V Inc. An approval of ordinance number 1037. The applicant is seeking a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to change the furniture, the future land use designation on one parcel, parcel totaling approximately .235 acres from the village's open space land use designation to the village's industrial land use designation for a property located at 6846 Seminole Palms Drive. And this is not quadriadual, so.
Bradford, you are. Great, thank you, Mayor. Um, the applicant is seeking a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use designation for one parcel totaling .235 acres from the village's open space land use designation to the village's industrial land use designation for a property located at 6846 Seminole Palms Drive. The property is currently vacant and was recently sold by the village to paint lots. The applicant has indicated in their justification statement that the ultimate goal is to. The applicant has indicated in their justification statement that the ultimate goal is to develop property for the purpose of enlarging the existing paint blocks facility parking lot. Justification statement further states that no storage of any material and or equipment, disabled vehicles of any kind will occur. In reviewing the proposed future land use map amendment, designating the parcel as industrial, village staff considered compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistency with the village's comprehensive plan, whether the action requested would would exacerbate any existing public facility capacity deficits in regards to roadway network, sanitary sewer, solid waste, drainage, potable water, and recreation open space, and concluded that it meets the review requirements for the future land use map amendment and therefore is recommending approval of this application. The planning zoning commission approved this application by a vote of five to zero. And with that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Rafford. Applicant to make any comments?
My name is Vincent Kaper. I'm the agent for the owners and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, before we take questions and comments from council, Diane, any any advance or requests on agenda item R four? Ray, anyone got their hand raised? Okay, I have not received any comment cards. I don't think there's anybody here who wants to comment. If you do, now would be the time. Seeing none, I'm closing public comment agenda item R four. Any questions from members of council?
Just just a comment. I think this is exactly what was envisioned when the mayor came up with his split the baby. Good solution and I'm glad half of the baby is here and that it makes sense to me. The storage half of the baby, the storage half of the baby is here. So thank you very much for working with us and going through the process and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments, council members? No? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number four.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed? Okay, Diane, let the record show that agenda item R four was approved 5-0. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item R five is a public hearing to consider application number 23 dash 022. An application by Holland and Knight on behalf of Crossroads R2G Owner LCC. The applicant is seeking requesting architectural and aesthetic review for the commission, purchase and installation of a stainless steel sculpture by artist Wenkin Chin to fulfill the art in public places requirement for a property located at 11603 Okichovie Boulevard. This is a quasi judicial hearing, so you'll have to be sworn in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes. Could you state your name for the record?
Jana Loto with Holland and Knight.
Thank you. Could you raise your right hand for me and I'll wait for Mr. Pisani and swear him in at the same time? Can you raise your right hand, Mr. Pisani? Thank you. Do you both swear from to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And I'll turn back to the council for any ex parte disclosures on this item.
I attended.
Village manager.
Thank you.
Sir, you're up.
Now it's smaller. There you go.
The applicant is requesting architectural approval for the installation of a public art sculpture to meet their art in public places requirement according to section 26 dash 75, point five of the village code relating to application 21 dash 02, SPMAR Publix at Crossroads. The slide in front of you illustrates 11601 Okichovie Boulevard. This slide is a bird's eye view of the property at 11601 Okichovie Boulevard. The slide here illustrates the location of the public artwork on the site plan at 11601 Okichovie Boulevard.
I don't know, 11601?
Public shopping center.
This is a slide as the estimated budget for the work of art. This was provided by the applicant. Thought I would share it. And this next slide is artist information. This is the artist is Wenkin Chen. Has a background in the arts, as you can see, the top part there. He's a professional artist and teacher, I believe, in Xiamen University. Since the 2000s, Wenkin Chen has used Chinese calligraphy, sculpture, and installation to explore the relationship between life, art, and their diversity. Wenkin Chen explores philosophical questions on life and the nature of time through elegant and abstract forms that aim to create a moment of pause for the viewer to contemplate the human experience. Wenking Chen's work is often displayed in public environments and has created several unique sculptures that serve as permanent public art installations. This following slide shows three different sculptures created by the artist. Are sort of varying examples of his work. And this slide here demonstrates a digital, or it's actually not a digital rendering, but the proposed sculpture for the site. The artwork is entitled Growing Number Three and created by the artist. The sculpture is 11 foot 5 inches high, 4 foot 6 inches wide, and 2 feet 9 inches deep, made of stainless steel.
Is it an unfinished eight?
Yep. Infinity, but not but not quite.
Almost, almost.
Almost infinity.
This slide, this slide demonstrates several angles of the sculpture. And sculpture will stand on a concrete base that will include light fixtures, which will illuminate the sculpture from dusk to midnight per the village code section on lighting. This next slide gives you a better understanding of that concrete base and the dimensions of the sculpture.
Mario, can I ask you a question about the base? It looks like it's leaning. It doesn't look, it doesn't look flat.
Looks like it's on an angle.
Yeah, I believe that once the applicant can speak more on it.
That's part of the art. It's gotta be on a flat, it can't be flat. What did they say? Is it the higher the beholder or something like that?
Until it falls over.
And so to my last slide, the slide illustrates. The illustrates a digital rendering of the public artwork as imagined on the northeast corner of Royal Palm Beach and Okichovie Boulevard. The applicant was reviewed and approved by the planning and the public art advisory board. And meeting all requirements, staff is recommending approval of application number 23 dash 022 AAR.
Okay, would the applicant like to make comments?
I actually have a presentation, but in the interest of time, since I know the night's getting late, I'll actually go ahead and just use the presentation put forth by staff. Once again, Jana Loto with the law firm of Holland and Knight. I'm here tonight on behalf of the owner of the Crossroads Shopping Center, as you know, which is located right across the street. We're before you tonight for our approval of the public art installation, which, as you know, is was a requirement of the approvals we received back in June, I believe, of 2021 to allow the reconstruction of the Publix, which is the beautiful, beautiful stores. I know it is now open. Had a few bumps along the way. Came before you for an extension of time to allow us to acquire this piece from China. As Mr. Pisano had indicated, we are proposing Growing Number Three by the artist Wenkin Chen. The sculpture, since he's already given you some background on the artist, I'll give you a little background on the the series where the sculpture comes from, just to give you a little bit of a perspective. His pieces and the ones that you saw are deployed throughout the world, the UK, Russia, Germany, among other locations. This particular sculpture is from a series called Life Continues in Space that the artist conceived back in 2010. And I believe the pieces that you saw, if I'm doing this right. Is it the mouse? Oh, no. I got it wrong. If you can go back to where the three images are. I don't know how to do that.
Do you want to put your presentation and use mine?
I I I lost my, I lost the presentation. I'm on the village of noise ordinance, so. If you can visualize the the slide that had the three metal pieces, backward, forward, endless curve, those pieces are all basically from the Life Continues in Space series. And that series and the pieces, the pieces are actually named by the artist to convey an eternal movement of substance in space. So basically, the sculpture shape records that movement in time. And his theory is that the human view of time and space is that when substance arises, space also arises. So that as substance moves, time is then the movement of the substance. Please do not ask me to explain that, but that is the explanation for the series.
No, I think it's perfectly clear.
So if you can visualize, Growing Number Three is is named aptly as a piece that is growing to conclusion as the infinity sign. So that's how I take it. As we all know, art is open to interpretation by the people that view it. Right? So that is Growing Number Three that we're presenting to you tonight. So the piece, although it appears that it's fabricated, it is not a fabricated piece. If you look at the service agreement that was included in the backup, upon hopeful approval of the piece tonight by the council, we will get actual renderings, drawings from the artists of the piece. That will have to be approved by us before they start fabrication. We, of course, will share that with the village to assure that everything is exactly as as approved by the village council. Once those drawings are approved, which we're hoping will happen very quickly, we pay 100% of the cost, which if we go back, and I don't know how to go back, is it by the?
Maybe you have to send them back to me.
Is it? To the estimated cost.
Yeah.
The estimated cost of the 53,000, 43,000 of that is for the artist fee, the fabrication, the materials, all of that, the transportation from China to the US. We will pay, yeah, we will pay 100% of that upfront. And then that process will start. It's approximately, and I did have an estimated timeline, but I'm pretty sure I I know it from heart. But with this, we estimate that we will have the payment in full and the approval to the artist in the early part of September because we appreciate staff moving this along so quickly. With fabrication then to take approximately two months and then two months for the piece to ship from China here to the United States. Now, if you can go back to the the height and the rendering, we did provide an exhibit to to staff to help show what the overall, what the sculpture might look installed, showing the overall height, which will be an overall height of 13 feet with the 18 inch base. The base is somewhat deceiving because the foundation that's required for this piece actually goes another 3, 4 feet in the ground. And with the footer, that's 6 foot by 6 foot with rebar. So there's a lot you don't see that's going on underneath the ground. To give you a perspective of the height of the sculpture, we did provide like a control and that is the pedestrian sign that you see signal on the light pole there at the corner. I apologize for it appearing that the base is slightly tilted. Since we're dealing through an art broker, Sachi Art, and we've not had direct contact with the artist, we were not able to get a rendering. So this is Holland and Knight's best attempt at photoshopping this sculpture into the corner and using the controls with the thing to get the height accurate for you, so.
That's all well and good, that's fine.
Please accept that.
As long as it actually looks like this.
I'm a lawyer, not a, I think so, anyway. But it will be a level, it will be a level base. It will, the sculpture will be level. The intent is for it to be placed there back in the grass area with the hedge kind of wrapping around it. In-ground lighting will be proposed, so it will be illuminated per the code from midnight to dusk. So I will tell you, just because I'm putting a placeholder in here, the MCIC approval we got from you in May gave us an additional six months, which takes us to November 18th, I believe. With our anticipated schedule, we are expecting to receive this possibly sometime in December for installation in January. So you may see my lovely face back up here again because we do not want to default on the bond for twice the amount that we did post with the village. But we're excited to finally be at this place and to hopefully get this finally installed for you all, so I.
That should be fine.
Respectfully request your favorable approval so we can move forward.
Any comments, questions?
Oh, Mike, I guess this is a Mario question because I know the intersection that this is going to be at and I know I've seen a good amount of middle school kids going by there. How easy is a stainless steel thing like this to climb up? Yeah, that that that'd work. I mean, that that's my only concern.
I mean, you can.
It won't be easier than climbing the one across the street and we haven't had a problem with that one.
Right.
Exactly.
Well, that one is a little different. That one's not as high. That's not a challenge. That's the like, the the little rope things. Yeah, it'd be much easier to get on, but.
We haven't had a problem.
Okay, so that's good.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I couldn't foresee somebody wanting to touch it or, you know, sort of.
Well, hopefully the the guards will be there and hopefully regulate it. The crossing guards will say, hey, get off of that. But that's what I see when I see.
There's there's a sculpture as well down, sort of, if you keep going on Royal Palm, if you keep going north, that's kind of hidden by trees, so if kids are playing around with art, they could choose that one.
Okay, thank you.
And we haven't had any issues with that one, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
I have a question. Is there some, is there an artist directive about how the sculpture gets placed? In what, in what angle?
That would be a question for the applicant.
So far, there has not, but I'm happy to, as part of our communication with them. I actually have an image that's a very nice close up of that corner and the area where it's going. And we can provide some further out perspectives so they know what's kind of going on around in the environment around it. And we're happy to ask him from his perspective, how does he think it's best to be placed in which angle? And then ultimately, we'll present that to the village and they can provide the ultimate word, so. I actually would like to see it on a rotating disc.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's, that's.
I mean, we can explore that. I know that it's it's anchored in such a way, one, for purposes of wind loading and everything else. I don't know how the disc works with that, if that compromises it in any respect. But also, I don't know with, to to the council member's point, if that might make it more of a, an interesting, fun place to play on. The old monkey thing that used to go around.
It's a Unimeric around.
But I have a feeling that might be probably the biggest issue we had because I know that we have, because of the size, the weight is obviously to assure wind loading and whatnot, especially since it's at an intersection and whatnot.
I have one question on the description of it. And how how will this be labeled? I mean, hopefully it's labeled with the artist's name and the name of the art. But will there be any kind of QR code that that on this or something where people can get more information on it?
We have, we're, we have been working on what we call like a public art map so that you can access a location on the village site, click on it and sort of have an interactive, you know, you can click on an image, you'll get like a pin, you know, and you click on it.
So we could put like a QR code or something out here where you could.
You could, yeah.
Get it.
Yeah, we could. That's the story. We could study that once the the work is up and in the future, but definitely, we already have the map in place. So we would want to add that to it.
Because it just does make a whole lot more sense when you know the story.
Yeah.
Educational.
To the village manager's point, that QR code could possibly go straight to a village council website that gives you a map of all of your art pieces and then the further information on all of those pieces as well. That way, it's all in one place.
Yep.
That's the idea.
Sounds good.
Do you know other questions from members of council? I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item five.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show, agenda item R five was approved 5-0. Good luck and good travels.
Thank you.
So much. Y'all have a good evening.
You too.
Agenda item R six is approval of a public art commission for the new village hall capital project and authorization for the village manager to enter to a written contract with the selected artists. So, boy, you're busy tonight.
Today's a good day.
You are, so.
All right. I don't see, I don't know if you guys can see it. Yeah, perfect. So the presentation before you regards the open call to artists for new village hall public art commission. The applicant, myself, on behalf of the village of Royal Palm Beach is requesting village council to select the preferred artists for the commission of public art to meet the public. to meet the public, the art and public places requirement for the new village hall project 20-54 New Village Hall. The current slide that you see illustrates a bird's eye view of our village hall complex at 1050 Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. This is an image that sort of outlines exactly the village hall complex. This slide here is the site plan for the new village hall project. And this slide here illustrates a rendering of the new village hall, which is now already created. But this slide shows the fountain feature on the left where the art and public places location is currently designated. You can see the fountain feature there on the left side. This slide again sort of gives you a better idea of the art and public places location. Changing the site of the art and public places location could be something that could be considered depending on the artwork. But on the site plan currently, that is the location.
Alright, I'm, I'm not oriented on where this really is. What's, where's the front of the village hall?
The front of the village hall would be the bottom part of the.
The bottom?
Yeah.
Part over here?
Yeah, let me see here. Yes. You can see there sort of the village hall, the fountain feature in the middle, sort of that black.
Yeah, okay. Right. Right there, yep.
Here.
Okay.
So this is the parking area, right, the new village hall. And that area right here, that's the fountain feature. So this, this.
So it'll be right there.
It's in the water.
It's in the middle of the reflection pool.
Could be.
Well, yeah, I mean, makes sense. So what do we, we need to prove tonight to give you the ability to start a contract process?
Well, tonight, we can select one of the artists, but I'll, I'll continue with the, with the PowerPoint and we'll. Here. So this is the fountain feature again, just a close-up. Even better idea.
Wow.
Sorry. For reference, that's the existing flag poles and then the new configuration, that they're in the same place.
So this slide illustrates the overview and qualifications for the open call to artists for the new village hall project. This is basically what we use to create the, what we call an open call to artists, similar to an RFQ. And we use the procurement from village code, which is the open call to artists or limited invitational. It's one of our first options when we want to procure art for the village.
They don't have like an art store we can go and look at stuff already built?
There, yeah. There's many platforms, yeah.
We're thinking more something like this and, and, and go through the catalog and have Mario bring you back. Say a half a dozen choices from, from the magazine. We can, that is another option that we can do.
So.
What do you guys think, hold on, hold on. What do you guys think about what Ray just said? Because.
I like that approach.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with this, let's go out and have art. Because I just feel, I don't know, I don't know what the value proposition is for the village by doing it that way.
Well.
Yeah, go ahead, Jan. You're an artist person.
As limited as I am. It's both, right? So there's pros and cons to doing it both ways. The, the one thing that I would say that we need to, and I'm not sure exactly how we're doing it, because we want, I want to make sure that we're tapping into local artists if we can.
Local.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
If we can.
Yeah.
And, you know, occasionally, once a week, I'll get a, a call from an artist. Hey, how come I don't know about? We can't direct art information to every artist.
Yeah.
As long as we're telling them where we're sending RFQs or RFPs or whatever, we can do that, but maybe the twains will never meet. But if we can sort of promote local artists, that would be great. That would be my.
What is your definition of local artists? Because when I think of what we want to do and I'm going, oh, okay, in the Western communities, I, I don't know of anybody that is. Were you thinking like state of Florida or you're thinking South Florida or US?
I think it.
US.
American.
Well, that's why I.
Well, I think it's, I think you, you first start local and I, what I mean by that is Royal Palm. Okay. How many artists from Royal Palm? I'm not sure. There's the Wellington Art Society, which a lot of Royal Palm artists belong to. Do they have the capability to do what we're doing? I'm not sure. So then you could expand Palm Beach County, and then you're talking South Florida, and then the state, and then.
Like sort of concentric circles of artists and where they are.
And it's sort of consideration, not necessarily, you know. Limitation and not just, you know, going national or international.
And when, and when we're doing an RFQ, we, we can do that. I mean, we, we get, but we are, we are limited to who, to evaluate who submits.
Exactly.
And, and trust me, if there was a local artist with a reputation for doing, doing art that, that, that we thought was good for the, for what we were doing, we would, that would absolutely get a higher ranking and, and. I mean, so we do that, and that's, that's not excluded. In this particular request, we got three, three submittals?
Well, we had around six or seven submittals.
Total, okay.
I believe six, right. And so we ranked them. But really, what we wanted to do was select two finalists. You'll see, I can, I can show in the presentation, but the second artist basically tied. So that's why you'll have three artists.
So the process we're, we're choosing is, is to commission our own. What we'll do is if we, if council approves this, we'll go back to the artist to try to negotiate a contract. That contract will include a concept coming back to council. And, and, and you can stop this anywhere along the way. Obviously, once you're under contract, there's, and you stop the contract, there's, there's costs, but I think we will, Mitty and I will, will get a contract in place where there can be stops at different points with known dollar amounts for us. But we're, we're not going to get ourselves down a path where you're getting something delivered you don't want.
And to your point, Jan, is that's what my envision was for the internal art was, and a rotating. So all of our art pieces, instead of what's inside for the walls, to go out and commission and have somebody send it out is have, so we have so many local artists to have that for our interior walls and stuff, so.
To that point as well, working currently on what we call a cultural asset survey. So it's on the site live now. We just haven't advertised it. And I've had two or three artists sort of sign up. And it's basically your name, your website, your medium. And so we can get artists from Royal Palm to sort of give us a list and we have sort of a database, you know, but that's something more for the future as people start filling it up and as we can sort of advertise that, we can work with that as well.
So what are, what are you looking for from us right now on this agenda item? Do we move forward with the, the top selected artists here that we have presented in front of you and work for and try to negotiate a contract with them to, to create and deliver a piece of art? A commissioned art approach. Right. Or if you're not comfortable with any of the, the top that we, the top artists, the top three that we selected, stop, stop it here and tell us to go to a catalog and try to find something. And that would be even better if you had some specifics of what you were looking for. I know we, so, so that, I, we, we don't have a problem either way. I think, I think the idea of starting to negotiate a contract probably. It is, it is a process. You're, you're starting, you're signing a contract before you know what you have. But so we, it's going to be a, a, a unique one for us to do. But they are, we do have, we did get a good response, as you said, six or seven. We do have top three.
So.
Like to work with or the top two that we, top one first that we like to work. We can't work with the second one until we stop working with the first one.
Right, to follow up on what you're saying, this is just the first option in the code, right? So commission an artist. So we did an open call to artists, we got submissions, and then we selected the best. We don't have to go this route. We just, we are exhausting the first option on the code. So that, let me go through the presentation. You'll, once you get to the visuals, I think maybe you'll have a better idea of what they're offering and then we can move from there. Sort of, I sort of included everything from the part of the RFQ, but we can sort of move past that. Our evaluation criteria. This is, we selected the first, basically the first artist, Beth Nyback. She had the highest ranking. And then the two other tied, so Dibari Innovation Design and Moro Studios. And again, this is says, the election committee will review submitted proposals and shall select at least two finalists, so. This is the first artist, Beth Nyback, has a bachelor of fine arts, lives and works in Kansas City. Is a nationally recognized metal sculptor and public artist. I won't read her background. I'll show you more of the images of the work. This is a piece called Skylight. And this is a piece called Indivisible. This one is called Seeker. So what we evaluate to, it's not just the pieces themselves, it's more what the artist is creating, what their cable are creating, what their vision is, the design, the aesthetic. Moving on to the next one, this is Owen Moro. Education in the Arts. Moro's a prominent artist creating site-specific sculpture for over 40 years. This is a piece called Lighthouse.
The stairway to where? Yeah, right.
This is a piece called Pilot Bridge. This is Omega.
Wow.
So very sort of grand.
Bungee jump from that.
Virgin nowhere.
The next artist is Vito Dibari. Based in Miami, Florida. More work. This one's created in West Palm.
That's in West Palm now?
Yep. I believe a few years ago. And this is in Odessa, Texas.
Cat and dog.
And so that's going over again what the options are for procuring art. The RFQ is what you just saw, but there are also an invitation, sole source procurement. So we can invite an artist who, whose work we'd like to create a commission or to buy. Or sorry, the direct purchase is another option where we can just directly purchase a work of art for the new village hall complex.
Along with what the mayor was suggesting or, you know, picking, choosing from other things to give you better direction or, or more of a direction from us, is there a site or sites that you recommend or you can send us to say, you know what, here's a good collection of work?
There's so many.
Yeah.
Do you know? It like, it depends on what we're, what you're looking for. And not only that, you would have to look at the size, the material, the location of the artist. It's similar to, you know? So it, it'll, it'll just be very broad. What I can do is I can sort of create, I don't know, maybe a list that I can share with you guys and sort of, sort of.
Is there any way you could put an email together with, with links to what she's talking about?
Me either.
With, wait, wait, let me, let me, let me rephrase that, because Marina is listening to secure links. Oh, boy.
That's the record show. We're talking about secure links.
Richard, I have PTSD.
We're talking about, we're talking about cash back?
It's okay.
Well, no, I have a question. In, in the RFQ, what are the parameters for someone to submit? Is it just their, their, their work and their background and, or are we saying we would love to commission a piece, here are sort of the parameters on size and?
We were pretty broad more than anything because we wanted to get as many submissions as we could. And basically, there were more, you have to be a professional artist.
Yeah.
Like that you work as, you know, not doing it on the side or something. So it's more that than anything, but.
I think you did include a site plan of, of the location.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the site plan was included.
He did give a, kind of an estimate of how, of, of the size that we were expecting.
There's a budget as well.
And the budget. That was all put in there as, as guidelines.
And do we give any extra credit for the two people who are in Florida?
I don't believe, I don't believe we, we have, we evaluated the criteria like that. Two of them, the, out of the three, two of them are in Florida.
Yeah.
And it just so happened that way, but.
So we have this piece out on the corner for our 50th anniversary. You all were around when the selection process took place. I mean, it came out pretty good.
Like the palms?
It was, yeah, it was representative of something that is characteristic of Royal Palm and its name and that.
Right.
For me, that's kind of what I would like to see in front of our new village hall, something that is representative, not obviously that, but.
No, no.
And that came out good, so. Does anybody know what the approach was that we used to wind up with? Yeah, we called up Mark Fuller, who was the artist, and asked him to come take a look at it. And he's, he is an artist that makes a living doing scul, outdoor sculptures. He's done quite a few in Palm Beach Gardens. That's how we knew him. If you go down PGA, you know the butterflies. And then you go to PGA Commons, you had the, the record label, the 45 record label one that he did that one. And he's, he's done, he's done a lot, actually. If you go to, just go to Mark Fuller's webpage, you'll see lots of pieces. So we just, we did, what we did is we, we knew he was a good outdoor artist. We hired him, told him what we're doing, the 50th anniversary, and it was his, he came up with that concept completely and then he brought it to you. And that's what we're kind of looking at doing here without picking the name. We, we went through the, the open call. We've got three artists that have the ability to evaluate what we have here and come up with something for us. That's why, like I said, it's, this, this is the, a next big step is picking someone. And there'll be some financial commitment that they're coming up with that, that concept. And that is, I don't, that's a tough one to negotiate because their cost of concept is a lot, like that the artist she was dealing with said, my concept costs 100%. You may run into that. We don't know. May not. I know Mark Fuller was, he was, his concept cost for that was $8,000.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if that's, you know?
Yeah.
So, so one of the things that, that always comes to my mind when I think about something that characterizes Royal Palm Beach is we have some spectacular sun, sunsets in, in Royal Palm. And you see some of the pictures from, from Commons Park. I mean, these are absolutely stunning. So something along the line of something characteristic representative.
And so that was the idea to begin with, with the RFQ, was to commission something so that we are in communication with the artist and we say, hey, we want to highlight sunsets and we want to highlight nature and we want to highlight sort of our focus on parks. And so that was the idea to begin with, instead of saying, oh, we'd like this piece, we want to buy that. Exactly. So something that's tailored to the community.
Okay, so where are we?
So given the, the choice, we chose for this artwork to go do the open call. These are the artists we have. So the request is, do we continue down this path and try to negotiate a contract with the, with the top pick the artist? Or one of the other two, we can, you can choose either, any three. Or do we stop that process and choose one of the other processes, which would be a direct purchase or, or an invitation to an artist we know?
What do you, what do you, you have a recommendation?
I mean, you know, this, this has, this, the, the process we picked has the greatest opportunity to come up with something very unique for this site.
Right.
Is it, so if you like these three artists and. Is it, so if you like these three artists and the way they've scored, I'm assuming they all have websites?
Yeah.
Other work, so maybe it's something that if we can research these three specific and look at them and say, you know what, I may like, I may not like this particular piece, but oh, I like that she did this one. That might give you more of a direction since you've already pre-qualified these artists, but I don't know if that satisfies your local artist concept.
Well, you know, I, I'm, I'm okay with the, I'm fine with the process in the three that are here. Um, and really, when I look at art, it's all so subjective. And in my mind, as long as it's not offensive in any way, I'm good with it.
It's offensive if you don't like it.
Now, that, that's a really, really good point. It's art. Not everybody's gonna love it, but if nobody hates it, we've succeeded.
There, there, there are.
If nobody hates, that's the, that's the ball, okay? I don't know.
If you don't hate it.
I mean, if that's, I can tell you what I kind of liked out of the three of them, just from the artwork you presented, you know, if I had to choose one format of it, I could probably tell you.
And so they, like, they have more work, right? And so what you're getting is a gist of their aesthetic? That's more or less what's happening now.
I think the point that Jeff raises is a very good point. We, can we come up with, what is it we wanted to reflect, given this is a new village hall that we built and it's a completely new configuration and and everything else that we're, we're going to be doing as part of this project? What is it we feel like will enhance that? You know, what's the, what's the theme? Is it capture the sunrise, you know, of Royal Palm? I don't know, but I, it might help if we had a, a, a concept that we all feel that this is what we want to see out of it, because if we do that, then when you look at the art, you can say, do you think it projects that? Or you don't think it projects that? If it doesn't, then we move on and define what we believe projects with that concept that we make, we have. That's kind of what you were saying, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So there was some language of that in the RFQ, um, but then again, like I said, that's, that was an open, you know? Um, we could study that second option, which is an invitation only, choose an artist and say, we want to highlight this, this.
Or we can make it part of the process, a part of the concept process that they will, they will individually talk to each of you and, and see what your thoughts are.
Do that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely do that. Well. Oh, by the way. Well.
We could talk on the phone, I mean, that would have.
I mean, they might get five different concepts. It's a creative process.
Right.
It's a creative process.
Okay. That might be a good idea. What do you guys think to, for us to get?
I.
You know?
I think it would be a good idea because as Jeff says one thing and when we started, I, I hadn't even thought about it, but then an idea came to my mind, which I'm like, okay, well, that's a completely different thing than what Jeff was talking about, but it did build upon his, okay, this is local character and at least, you know, if we've got five of us coming forth with someone and at least we could sit here and discuss it and maybe come to a consensus, okay, this is the path we should take.
Yeah.
And it might make it easier to get someone to make that as opposed to, you know, like Selena said, there are some things that I, I like the eye thing. There were certain things that stood out, the, the walking up to nothing pictures kind of scared me, but, uh.
You know what? Just, just get a rendering, a giant ibis, put it out front and we'll call it a day. That, that's.
But we did.
That's indigenous.
We.
Let me give you an example.
We didn't get Royal Palm, it wasn't an ibis hunting ground. I think it was a seminal hunting ground that became the city of, or village of Royal Palm Beach.
Let me give you, let me give you an example, okay? If, if, I understand, I'm trying to give you the concept of what I think we, kind of. If we were a military base or an air force base and we were building a new headquarters and we wanted some art out front, we'd put a, a jet out there, okay, up on the stand. Because it's related to what we do, it's related to our business of being in the air force. So I, I'm trying to come up with the, with the equivalent of that, if, if, if anything. But our new headquarters in Royal Palm Beach, our new village hall, all right, something that represents what we do. I don't, I don't know if that makes sense.
I did, I did hear an equivalent, I did hear equivalent to that today from a creative person.
One of these folks?
No, not one of these, not one of these.
One of his creative friends.
We're a family-oriented community. Why don't we just hold, hire a sculptor to, to, to sculpture some kids playing in the fountain?
That might be, that might do it. I mean, yeah, I'm not, yeah, in fact, that's, that's a good idea, actually.
Just take this sculpture from Regal then.
Already done. Already exists.
We want our own, though.
Yeah, how do we proceed on this agenda item? What are you looking for?
What do you want us to do?
And just, if I could just make one comment.
Yeah. So.
Voice of reason.
The, well, the. This, this was done as an RFQ as, as Mario indicated, so you do have to, if, if none of the three, the, the code requires the selection committee that convene to recommend two to you and as Mario said, two of them tied, so you have three. If you don't like any of those options, you do need to dispose of this and reject and start over. If that's the desire of the council to proceed a different direction and do a sole source or some other, um, method allowed by your code, but, um, what's before you are the three that were recommended for approval by selection committee? So if you don't like o, either of those three and you want to go a different route, you need to reject and start over.
I, I think we need to get some consensus around, you know, do we, what, we want something out there that kind of represents who we are, what we do and the pride of our new village hall, you know, that kind of being representative of, of what, what we do. I don't know. Now, what that is, is the kids playing in, it might, I don't know, but that's not, that's, that's a nice concept, but if we could establish that and maybe and say, here's what we're looking for, as opposed to telling us what we're looking for. We're kind of saying, you know, here's the concept that we're looking for. I don't know.
But can we still do that with these three?
Can we do it? I'm saying, if we could do that with these.
I think so. We would have to select maybe one of them and then do that second option, which would be sole procurement.
So we could pick one?
We just need to.
Yeah, we can pick one of these three as well.
Since we're all having an open discussion, out of the three different styles, I liked Beth.
I do too.
The best?
The, the, the artist that they all picked first.
The top one. Top choice, right?
Yeah, the top choice.
Right, so.
That's good.
So. So I make, do you want me to make a motion then where we can say is that we're accepting a, um, to accept this artist with the exception that the piece will be commissioned based on?
And you don't even have to get that specific and just, it can just be a motion to move forward with the desired artist.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve, uh, artist Beth Nibek as the selected artist to move forward.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that, believe it or not, agenda item R six is approved by zero. Okay, moving right along. The agenda item R seven is a public hearing for a second reading and adoption of ordinance number one zero three five, amended chapter eight. Elections of the village code, uh, of ordinances to provide that the village of Royal Palm Beach will hold its next municipal election on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, in conjunction with the presidential preference primary election. Who needs to talk, you need to talk to us about that? We, we know, but this is a second reading, so we know the deal here, right? Okay. Okay, okay. All right. Unless there are questions or comments from members of council, I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't, I know there's no public, but could be solicited public comment.
Yeah.
We have to take public comment on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have any public comments in advance?
No, mayor.
Anyone have their hands raised? I don't have any public comment cards submitted to me. Does anyone out here like to make a public comment? See none. I'm gonna close the floor to public comment on agenda item R seven.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number seven.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that agenda item R seven in the second reading was approved five zero. Okay. Considerate, where's Sharon? I don't see. Where's she go?
Oh, there she is.
There she is.
Oh, you know, we put this at the end. That's not fair.
We ought to review this whole thing and get it right.
We're still hazing you, apparently.
Okay, agenda item R eight is consideration of the appointment of Sharon Alameda. Okay, as the fifth member of the, of the police pension board of trustees. Do we have to take public comment on this? No? There no other, no other questions or comments?
I make a. I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number eight.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show. Congratulations, Sharon. Have fun.
Thank you for hanging in there.
We should, we should have hesitated on the approval.
That's cruel.
I'm in a discussion. All right.